You can feel disruptive free, but at the same time be able to connect every single day. So today we have a number of individuals that are here going to present and we really thank them. And they work in the Office of Climate and Culture. As you know, we have the Chief of Climate and Culture. We have Mrs. Tracy Brown. We also have Ms. Elizabeth Tanner, who is the Supervisor of Emotional Wellness. We have Michael Kelleher, Supervisor of Clinical Care. Anne Townsend, who is the Supervisor of Psych Services. Also, we have Ashley Capuzzi, did I say that right? All right Supervisor, I mean PE, PE Health and Dance as well. And then we have Holly Seiya, which is also the Director of General Services. And these individuals have worked tremendously hard to identify and leverage, you know, resources. And they'll speak to the body of work today and I'll go ahead and pass that over.
Thank you Superintendent Davis, thank you Board. I want to start with who our stakeholders are with our mental health plan. Whether this is in brick and mortar or through a virtual means. We provide services, mental health services to students and families. We make sure our educators are supported as well. And we involve our community partners with a lot of this work to address the mental health needs of our students. So the major building blocks of our mental health plan are essential requirements that we must meet and must be detailed in our mental health plan that we submit to the state. Our legislative mandates that focus on linking students to direct mental health services and treatment, as well as assessments. We must include evidence-based and research-based programs to support the whole child. We must provide professional development on mental health awareness, prevention techniques and intervention. And we must enhance the collaboration between the community-based mental health partners and our site-based mental health professionals. So all those aspects must be included in our plan that we submit yearly. Taking a look at our budget for the 2020-2021 school year. Last school year in 1920, we received approximately $4,569,415 from the state. This year, our allocation was higher. We received $6,190,059. So that's a difference of about $1,620,644. So with this increased allocation, that's always good news for our district that we have more dollars to spend to the mental health needs of our students, teachers and families. We have put up here on the slide some major expenditures that we hope to accomplish during this year. One of them, the first one that's in a lighter color is the additional student services personnel. The more boots we have on the ground, working with students, providing direct services, the better. The more students we can touch and speak to and console, that would be increased academic achievement. So we've got about $1.5 million to hire. So far, we have hired 12 additional school social workers. We also must put an allocation for our professional development. Continue to train teachers, student services staff, other administrators and staff members on mental health. Create trauma trainings, create trainings that focus on curriculums that we would like to implement. So we have an allocation for that. We also have our contracted community agencies because as a district, we really can't do this on our own. Some of our students need more intensified behavioral and mental health interventions. So we have an allocation aside to work with our partners and help students streamline mental health services in the community. And then we have our evidence-based program and telehealth services. And this is something we've also added this year is our telehealth supports. We want to make sure that any program that we're purchasing can be done brick and mortar or virtually. We want to make sure that they're evidence-based, that they really truly meet the mental health services or needs of our students. And that we are bridging any gap that we have between a student working at home and learning from home and receiving mental health services. So we have an allocation for that as well to cover those types of supports. We cannot do this without our student services team, okay? We, the reason that we think in Hillsborough County excel in mental health is that we have a school that is equipped with school counselors, school health services that include our professionals of RNs, LPNs, APRNs and HAs, our school psychologists and our school social workers. One of our major goals with our mental health plan is to lower those ratios. So the school counselor to student ratio needs to be lowered. You know, we want to have those personnel to provide direct services and be able to focus more on those group of students within their school. The more time they have with them, the more interventions they can do, the more support that they will receive. So onboarding those additional student services folks, but also making sure that we have working teams within the building is very important. And they need to work with their school administrators to make sure that they're getting their job done. I think one of the major training points that we have is that you have a counselor in your building. You have a psychologist. They need to be doing the job that they are trying to do. And one of those major job responsibilities is mental health services for students. So strategies to strengthen the culture, and this really goes to our pandemic with COVID-19 and other diversities and difficulties that we've had at the beginning of the school year and during our spring, is that we must support our staff at the schools. One of the training components that we have for our administrators is to really recognize the efforts of the staff. We not sure where our staff members are coming from. Recognize that each of our staff members are coming from a different experience. And supporting them, understanding and having patience with your staff and being flexible is going to be key. Allowing time to create a support system when staff is struggling, because I think it's going to happen. When we are in a time of unknowns, we are not sure, we don't have a consistent schedule, that can sometimes create trauma. So when our administrators and our support team can help our teachers navigate that when they're struggling and having that plan in place is really going to be important. Ensure calm space, a place for you to vent and deescalate if needed. There should be places on campus where teachers feel safe to do that. And we need to have partnerships in schools for check-ins. Wanted to highlight some of the professional development opportunities that we have put into our mental health plan. One large component is youth mental health first aid training. This is a state mandated training for the districts. Every Hillsborough County employee must take youth mental health first aid. We are lucky in our district that we've been training for over five years, this particular model. We have over 4,500 youth mental health first daters in Hillsborough County Public Schools. We have 51 certified youth mental health first aid instructors. This training is very standardized. You can only have a limited number of people in the course. You must have two trainers. It takes a while to get to the whole district. So the state recognized that. And in the meantime, while you're waiting to take youth mental health first aid as a staff member, you can participate in the Cognito At-Risk Simulation Modules that the state purchased for districts as well. So Cognito is a one-hour module where the teachers participate in mental health conversations through a simulation. And so far to date, we have over approximately 2,397 teachers that have taken this training just since really the start of the school year. We rolled this out really big at the end of July or early August and we already have over 2,000 employees that have taken that, which is great. We also trained our student services staff on trauma-informed practices over the summer. We did a Train the Trainer Module. We have over 700 student services staff that are trained on a trauma presentation to present back at their school sites that gives them strategies on how to cope with traumatic events that they might have occurred during the pandemic, how to support students and what pragmatic interventions student services personnel can do when working with staff and students. So that training was provided to our teams. We also have rolled out a diversity and racial bias training and wanted to recognize and hone in on how diversity and racial bias can have an impact on a student's mental health, how to have appropriate conversations with students that maybe have experienced biases to date and how to properly intervene and support those students. We also have flew many social-emotional learning trainings, whether it be in a virtual environment where the teacher is delivering social-emotional learning instruction in a virtual platform or in person. We have trainings for teachers to understand SEL and our ACES and know how that trauma impacts social-emotional learning and what we can do to support students and educators in our wellness. So our goal for social-emotional learning, our priority is creating a community of culture and care. We want students to feel connected to their school. We want them to be able to have trusted adults on campus. We want them to develop healthy relationships with both peers at their schools and adults and be able to do that in the community as well. As you know, students don't always come in with those type of skills. They must be modeled, they must be directly taught. So through our SEL priorities, we're going to make that a mission to model and teach students that connectedness. Also being socially aware, you know, how do you notice social cues? How do you communicate well with others? How do you problem solve and face those adversities and how to handle yourself in those social situations? And then we want to promote being emotionally well. Use these skills to live that happy productive life. And what can we do to assist students to make those goals happen? So at this time, we're going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Kelleher. He's going to talk about our partnerships.
Mister Superintendent, Board, thank you for having us here today. So I want to quickly talk about our community partnership. Elizabeth mentioned that we cannot do this alone. So we've contracted with Central Florida Behavioral Health Network. They're a managing entity that have helped us with community partners. They really break down those barriers for us. They've helped us with monetary needs of families. This is our first full year of implementation with them. We've had well over 500 referrals. About 65% of those go through insurance, which is good. But our district has paid for about 35% of those through our district funds, through our mental health funds. So we want to continue to increase that for families that are really in need. This is a list of our providers. As you can see, this is growing because we see the needs around the district. We are analyzing those needs. You can see some of our additional providers are the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay, a huge provider here in this county that focuses on trauma-centered therapy, which is so important right now. We have Heads which we included, which is like the Plant City kind of South County area. So we continue to analyze the needs around the county so we can provide those mental health supports to those students. One of the big areas that we know we need to focus on going forward is telehealth. Our school-based staff, when this pandemic began and we were out of school, continued services via telehealth. And Elizabeth touched on those staff, our counselors, school psychologists, school social workers. We continued services via telehealth if students had IEP counseling or regular counseling. We wanted to keep those mental health supports up. Also, we wanted to make sure our community partners, those eight you just saw, all offered full telehealth services and they do. And we're talking medication management, psychiatric appointments, individual counseling, some group counseling. I ran the numbers yesterday and we have well over 2,000, around 2,400 sessions, telehealth sessions that have been going on since this began. So we want to keep focusing on that and making sure those numbers are growing and that our students and families continue to receive the services that they need. I want to touch quickly on the school-based versus community-based because we do both of these. The school base is one of the big keys and this is our majority, okay? So of the referrals that we're looking at for mental health this school year, well over 15,000 have been school-based, okay? So that's again, that student services team at the school or via e-learning providing mental health support. And then we have our community base, which are usually our longer-term kind of needs, the more therapeutic, trauma-focused needs that our students have. Those, we had about a little over 5,000 referrals to community agencies, so that's really good. There's a lot of overlap between the two, so that's why it's so important for those two groups to work together. And that's where we rely on Central Florida for that. And also our group of district mental health clinicians, which are licensed and they work closely with these community agencies, with students and with the schools. So we're happy with those services. I want to touch briefly on school safety and threat assessment just because it's such an important part of all these bills that have come out. Remember, the state actually has mandated the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines. Came out of the University of Virginia from Dr. Dewey Cornell. Everybody is trained. We worked hard to train everybody up last school year and we continue trainings. I trained hundreds of staff members over the last couple of weeks on overviews and updates of that. Our district has gone online with threat assessment, which is exciting. I think that just puts us in the forefront of a lot of districts in the state and makes a consistent platform for every school and how they report, how they document. And really the key with this threat assessment is prevention, okay? We don't want to get to the crisis, so we want to prevent. And that prevention includes counseling and things like that. So we've training our staff to recognize those signs early, to work with our school behavioral threat assessment teams at the sites. We've really tried to bolster those teams, administrators, student services and law enforcement. So we've worked with Chief Newman closely. He's a great representative for this, for this work. And we also have a district behavioral threat assessment team, which kind of does more of the overview for policies and procedures and also looks at some more of the high-end needs that some of our students have to kind of help with those. The last part I'm going to touch on today is just some mental health data. Superintendent talked about how important it is to analyze that data and we do that. So we report to the state each September certain numbers. So you can see those numbers there. That's through May of our schools. So you see the number of students referred, number of students who actually received services. And then you see some other dynamics like threat assessment and suicide assessment. I'm going to pass it over Anne in a second. But we really use those numbers, not only just to report to the state, but to problem solve with schools and identify schools that we can provide more support to. We're working with Central Florida to perhaps even provide some therapists or things that some of those schools may be with high Baker Act numbers or suicide or threat assessment numbers. So we're looking at all those details. And I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Townsend.
Good morning Chairperson Snively, Board Members and Superintendent Davis. I'm going to take the next few minutes to discuss suicide assessments, the protocol that we have in this district in terms of prevention, intervention and follow-up or post-prevention, as well as addressing the Baker Acts in the district. So I'd like to start off by reiterating what both Elizabeth, as well as Michael, have shared regarding the supports that we have in this district, looking at mental health as a whole. So in the case of suicide, you see the number of assessments reported there at 2,723 as reported by school personnel in terms of having school-based mental health professionals assess students who have at some point either gestured, verbalized, maybe written on paper a desire to harm themselves or perhaps even harm others in the process. And so we have a formalized means by which we would consult teachers. We consult law enforcement professionals. We consult parents and collaborate with them in order to follow up with a systemized protocol for conducting an interview and trying our best to determine what's the probability level of that child following through. Before we get to that point, we feel it's important for teachers who are right there in front of students, whether virtually or in person, and recognizing their patterns of behavior, recognizing changes that might occur, might be hearing from students themselves directly or from parents. How do we make sure we equip teachers with that knowledge before we even get to an assessment? So we have a training that's provided by all of our school-based mental health professionals, our school psychologists, school social workers and school counselors, in which we share with teachers, what are some of the resiliency factors? What are some of the protective factors that we can build up? But what are also some of the warning signs or risk factors that we need to take a look at? So providing this training to teachers as well as our efforts with youth mental health first aid training, Cognito as a suicide prevention measure. We're trying to build that understanding and empower teachers in terms of what to see first. So our school-based mental health professionals provide that training to teachers and then they turn around and they provide sessions to students themselves. You may have heard of our ACT NOW assemblies. And we have to get a little creative. Previously, we did them in-person in small groups or larger groups. But the purpose of those ACT NOW assemblies is to have students be aware and acknowledge. They want to be alert to any changes in themselves or their peers. They need to respond by showing that they care and then tell a trusted adult. So during these assemblies, we have your student services personnel, we have administrators at the school. We have our law enforcement officers or security officers also be part of this assembly to say, when you are here at school, these are the trusted adults that you can go to provide, to provide support for you. We also provide information regarding our community partners, 211, the Suicide Prevention Lifeline. So students know too, outside of school, what resources are available to them as well as to their parents for those supports. So Michael mentioned that our threat assessment is an online protocol at this point in time. We are, we are working with Public Consulting Group, PCG, so that we can parallel or mirror our suicide prevention protocol so that it's also online to help us increase the accuracy of our reporting numbers and the ability to collect data. We also have referrals to our community agencies in the Central Florida Behavioral Health Network. So sometimes students need a little bit more intensive support than we can provide in the school setting. And we want to make sure that we are able to provide that information regarding those agencies as well. And lastly, we don't want to ever do a one and done. If a student has reached out to us or a family has reached out to us for support, we want to not only conduct that assessment at that point in time, but we need to develop a plan. And that plan means we need to follow up with services and supports that are available to the student in the school and again with our community partners. We have a district crisis intervention team that is employed in the instance, an unfortunate circumstance in which a student might die by suicide. And we want to make sure we avoid a contagion effect. We want to again, go into those schools, provide direct services, work with those school-based student services teams, teams rather, as well as our district suicide intervention team to respond in terms of the crisis. With Baker Acts, you will see the number there, the number of law enforcement Baker Acts, again, as reported by schools, is 324 for last school year. That's somewhat of a decrease. For the 2018-2019 school year, we had 445 reports of Baker Acts that were initiated at the school setting but conducted by law enforcement. So again, we follow a protocol, we share it with law enforcement. Law enforcement then implements their protocol and determines whether or not a child should be Baker acted. At this point in time, we are working with our local planning team, Safe and Sound Hillsborough. If I could also recognize Board Member Stewart for her work along with Public Defender Julian Holt and Marie Moreno in terms of making us aware and having these open discussions, not just in the school district, but with our community partners and local agencies as to how we can increase mental health and decrease suicide, decrease maybe Baker Acts that are inappropriate, but making sure that when a student needs to have that support, that the Baker Act is available for them and we have those follow-through services that are available. So again, we want to continue to support students in crisis. We want to educate parents on mental health as well as Baker Act procedures. They are part of the process when it comes to suicide assessments and Baker Acts. We're going to continue to brainstorm together, see if we can have maybe some alternatives, so additional supports in place to support students with mental health needs. And we want to make sure that we have a coordinated system of care. And that's what this is all about, working together in teams. So we do have legislation that we always align ourselves with. And at this point in time too, we're looking at partnerships with the University of South Florida, the Crisis Team of Tampa Bay and others so that we have mobile crisis response teams that will also be working with Hillsborough County Public Schools.
Good morning Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Davis and staff. I'm here to speak on behalf of Curriculum Instruction and K-12 Academics to provide a clear picture of what we're doing on the education side for curriculum. There is a rule for grades six through 12 mandated required instruction that we follow where whatever instruction is taught, it's aligned to not only health standards, but there are specific requirements A through J that has to be covered within the instruction. So what you will see here is an effort for us to deliver instruction to all students and ensure that we're providing mental health instruction across multiple content areas. In middle school and high school, you will see instruction delivered in more than one content area. This also allows us the opportunity to provide differentiated opportunities so that students are receiving the same instruction each year. Currently in our sixth through eighth grade, they are receiving, as Anne mentioned, the ACT NOW presentations with our student services personnel. And those are delivered in assembly style. In grade six, we have our CRDM, which is our Career Research and Decision-Making Wheel, that we do our life skills lessons. And same with partnership of our grade seventh and eighth physical education life skills lessons. With life skills, it's scaffolded where between sixth, seventh and eighth grade, they are taking leveled lessons so that in between those lessons, they're learning different coping skills, strategies to deal with stress and anxiety, as well as it touches on substance abuse, which is also part of letter J in the mandated instruction. In grade seven for Language Arts, ELA, we currently use the EverFi Mental Health and Wellness Basics Lessons. And that's only delivered in seventh grade through our ELA. And then in eighth grade through Social Studies, we use the Mendez Too Good for Drugs Program, which also touches letter J in the mandated instruction. In high school, again, we revisit the ACT NOW partnership with our student services team so that they're getting that school-wide suicide prevention education. And then in our ninth grade, HOPE, we use a, our curriculum, our textbook is Human Kinetics, but it really is surface level on what mental health is. And so we also partner with the Teen Mental Health Curriculum Guide, which we were delivered the instruction or training through the Binion Project. And we utilize that to enhance our instruction, which Human Kinetics, it goes surface, but we're allowed to go a little bit deeper through those Teen Mental Health Curriculum modules. On top of that, we also use the EverFi Alcohol EDU and Prescription Drug Safety Lessons, which is also again, part of the mandate. In grades nine through 12 in English, we use the EverFi Mental Health Basics, the Alcohol EDU and Prescription Drug Safety Lessons. You will see that repeated from HOPE as well as English because we know there are waivers that are out there. And so we want to make sure we meet the needs for every student to get the education. In grade 12, we also deliver instruction through our ELA through the Nocotics Overdose Prevention Education, which is NOPE, presentation where we bring in an outside guest speaker to deliver that instruction. One really neat thing with partnering with EverFi is that we get what's called a Impact Report. And what you see here is one of the Impact Reports for Mental Wellness Basics. Our numbers again here are represented only for seventh, ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th grade because those are the courses that we're taking, the Mental Health EverFi sections. With this snapshot, we're able to see where our students started and where they finished with the instruction. So it's very powerful to us because then we know where we need to meet students' needs. And we're also able to compare this to our YRBS data. What is it really saying and where do we need to target or have students revisit? Through EverFi, they're delivered modules, which could be self-paced or they can be face-to-face lessons. So when I mentioned prior, when we talk about differentiation through our ESC, it may be a face-to-face. So in this Impact Report, you will not see the computer modules where students are left off because students were taking it through a computer, that's what you see here. But if they were delivered the face-to-face instruction, it's a teacher delivering the instruction and the students going through the modules with teacher-led instructions. So we do offer that differentiation. For the Alcohol EDU or Prescription Drug Safety, again, we're able to get the snapshots of the pre and post. And where we see that in pre, a lot of our students were able to make gains where we see the science of addiction, understanding prescriptions and then supporting a friend. And that's huge. And then last but not least, the Alcohol EDU, same thing. You'll see our numbers increase with our pre and post. And then the pre, like 2018 through 2019, those numbers reflect a little bit lower because Alcohol EDU, Mental Health and the Prescription Drug Safety were primarily used as specifically the mental health was newer last year. And then the Alcohol, the EDU and Prescription Drug Safety were used as a supplement for HOPE, what our textbook didn't cover if we wanted to go a little bit deeper with our students. So that's where you'll see the number differentiation from 2018-2019 school year to 2019 to 2020. Apologize? Madam Chair, Honorable School Board Member, Superintendent Davis and staff. Another thing that we're very proud of is our parent and community outreach. In collaboration with Ms. Member Perez, last year, we started to have community meetings. We continued those meetings because we continued to see the relevance.
We continued those meetings because we continued to see the relevance. We hope to continue them throughout the year virtually, not just at the district level, but at the school level. We're really tasking our student services staff at school sites to make sure that during conference nights and other events that they have, that they continue to promote the mental health professionals and the staff that we have at our school sites and knowing how that we can help and support our students. We've even gone as far as doing something with multi-counties, working with Polk, Pasco, and Pinellas County so that we can continue to make sure that as a larger community, we're truly taking care of the mental health needs of our students. Another thing that we're doing along with Ms. Gray is her Hillsborough Healthy Schools Initiative. Not only do we take care of the student's physical health, but we're also making sure that we're focusing on a student's mental health. And you know, we're very proud that in our district, we have won the Gold Status Award. And we continue to make sure that we excel with our staff to make sure that we do meet the needs physically and emotionally with all of our students. We know we will be successful as we increase the number of school-based student services personnel we have to provide services to students, when we've increased the number of certified youth mental health first aiders, when we've increased the number of students who have access to community and school-based mental health services, and when we've increased the understanding of equity, diversity, and inclusion when developing supports for all of our students. And we plan on doing that through some next steps. And those are continuing to align and enhance our SEL evidence-based programs, continuing to support students impacted by racial bias and provide strategies that support students' emotional health, by continuing to advocate for our student services mental health professionals at school sites, by bolstering our telehealth for site and community-based mental health providers, and then also continue to train on mental health awareness. We all know that many students have already suffered trauma. Many of our adults also suffer trauma. So we have to be able to be aware and be able to focus on that trauma and know how to move forward. Now, we know that at Palm River, we've had a very special program through the National Dropout Prevention Training. And so we're going into year two with that. And it's really making sure that we understand that people have a history of trauma. And we have to understand that the pandemic and the other things going on in the community have sometimes exacerbated some symptoms. Sometimes our students may come in right away with these, but sometimes they may hold them in and it will come out eventually. So we just need to make sure that we're training our staff so that they're aware and they can know those signs and symptoms of when things like that occur. So thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you through the chair. So what you will see, I want to thank everyone for their time today in providing continuous insight about how we continue to connect with every one of our employees and at the same time create a safe space for every one of our students. And through the chair, what you'll see is that there will be an expansion on district-wide SEL priorities, making certain that everyone understands a sense of connectedness, a sense of social awareness, and a sense of emotional well-being and be able to put proactive steps, what schools can be able to take and resources they'll have by grade band. You'll also see an opportunity for us to strengthen partner, community partnerships through mental health and how we're going to better coordinate internal services versus external services and make certain that we leverage geographically what services are aligned to particular schools so that we can have immediate availability for our students and our families. And then we will expand Youth Mental Health First Aid Training at a really nice job in Hillsborough County, but at the same time, trauma-informed training. And we'll have matrices around that. But we're going to also implement a new initiative with Panorama Survey for our students. And that just gives us a true identification of how our children and students are feeling within their school. Do they feel connected? Do they feel safe? Do they feel valued? What we can do to take this information in order to improve the overall culture within every one of our classrooms and every one of our schools. And we're going to better align our socio-emotional curriculums. I mean, we have a lot going on. So be able to mainstream and be able to make certain that the socio-emotional curriculums that we have is matched by grade band. I know we do a lot with Second Step. But looking if seven, you know, seven mindsets can be able to bring onboard, especially at the secondary level, how does that particularly fit? To be able to continue to gain access. And then being able to look to establish partnerships with our medical health providers to be able to have drop-in clinics at our schools, particularly in the high school level, where we can have a, you know, a clinician, therapeutic clinician at every one of our high schools, where any student can transition to that individual, have accessibility to them just to be able to talk about what they may have experienced, whether that be in the classroom, in the community, in the home, so that we can determine whether or not we have to make additional steps for assessments and additional services may be provided. And then one of the biggest things, I know that in the last session, you know, House Bill 315 did not transition, was not approved. And that was about mental health days. And one thing we want to do and we'd like to do through our team, and Mrs. Perez has been a huge champion of this, is try to bring mental health days to Hillsborough County, meaning that we would provide, particularly looking the second semester as we align internal and external providers. And if a student needs, after additional assessment, needs to, you know, additional services outside of the day, giving that mental health day with and linking them to outside services if we cannot handle it internally. And being able to particularly look and have conversations of waiving that day with documentation so that those services can be provided to that family, to that student. We'll be the first in the state to be able to do so. More has to come on that. We've got a lot to build and potentially make it a reality. But I will share with the board as we continue to move that in the direction where it becomes a reality. And then one thing we can do, we do have an online opportunity for students to identify if they've had undesirable experiences within our schools. But I think we can use some of the additional mental health dollars to stand up a crisis and bullying hotline that we would be able to filter and be able to gain immediate information that we can be able to start investigations within our schools and to be able to comb through and address to create that safe culture. And so lots to do, lots going on. But know that we will put matrices behind this as we continue to identify initiatives, projects, and targets. And they'll be well-defined.
All right, thank you, Mr. Superintendent and staff for the presentation today. At this time, we do have some board members who would like to ask questions or make comments. We have about an hour and 15 minutes to have a discussion, so we should have plenty of time to have all questions answered. I will ask that as a gentle reminder, board members, please direct your questions to the superintendent. And then if staff needs, if he needs assistance from the staff for answering questions, he can do that. But we'll go ahead and start with Member Gray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Superintendent Davis, for making this mental health a priority. And thank you, Member Perez, for bringing this forward. It's very, very important. What I get from each of your speaking points, wonderful staff, by the way, is that we are prioritizing mental health for our children and as it should be. I also am reminded that the data suggests that we had over 20,000 children that asked for mental health assistance. That's a lot, 20,000. And I'm, no doubt, will be growing. I am also reminded that our partners, such as Mendez and Daco, have been great partners. And I know we have a slew of them. Thank you so much for making that grow as well. I think some of the board members have crisis center appointments as well. Well, the reality is that, and Ms. Capucci, you brought this out, that we are now putting inside our curriculum mental health supports or language, which really helps our students have the effective reasoning that they can share their thoughts and their minds and their various frustrations. A few questions. Number one, when I was at Belmont Elementary yesterday, it was the neatest thing, the reality was I went into one of the pods, this is a brand-new school, and in the middle of the pod was a desk, social distance, you know, all that was corrected, I mean, correct. And they had a tutor for those students that would come out of four of the classrooms who might need help. And on the other side, they had a mental health component for those children who had that. Now, my question, and Ann, you can answer or any, oh, sorry, Superintendent Davis.
Feel free.
The reality, you kind of put a glimpse on it. The reality of our future, we already have it in our academics in the textbook, et cetera, computer. How do you feel, Superintendent Davis, that this model will be shared throughout our entire school system? Where children can have a place, immediate proximity, and you know, every five minutes, a high school child makes a big difference. How are we looking at setting this type of model in our schools in the future where students can immediately have a mental health situation conversation going?
Yes, ma'am, through the chair. So one thing that we do really well is that educators always create safe places to have conversations, whether it's teachers, support professionals, school counselors, administrators. We are always trying to champion to be able to talk about the accessibility. And we understand that, you know, sometimes these, you know, students' experiences, you know, they, you know, they may, something may be triggered in a classroom and right then and there, they may not have the accessibility to that teacher because that teacher's in the flow of conversation. So there may, we want to make certain that we have systems and processes that allow us to have, you know, to be able to connect with a school counselor, to set aside time for a teacher, when to see a, you know, when to see a practitioner. So it's going to be able to leverage systems in our schools. And as we partner with not only internal and external providers to be able to get more individuals that we can, and I say that whether it's school psychologists, social workers, whether it's clinicians to come on our campuses at particular times so they know that they can have scheduled outlined days or they can really have in-depth conversations where needed. And our job from those are just initial conversations. And once those initial conversations start talking about the overall mental health, then that battery assessments will be able to determine whether or not additional services that we may not be able to withhold or provide may be needed and starting to have that connectivity through the social workers or any other practitioners to give them additional options that may be able to allow them to have, to meet and be in a better place, whether it be counseling, whether it be resources, whether it be, you know, you name it, we'll be able to have a list of next steps to help them through the way. And please, if anyone wants to expand on any of my answers, you're more than welcome.
So.
And you don't feel you have to.
Madam Chair, could I just ask one more question and then get back in the queue? The other one, the flip side, of course, is you all are the great positive spirits necessary for our children. But then we have a disproportionality of suspensions. And in my work, I know that I've been pushing the Positive Behavior Incentive Support System, PBIS, or the HOUSE system, Ron Clark, restorative practices that mitigate the high amount of suspensions, which we need to make sure that we're focusing on as well. The reality is, we want to keep our kids in school. And we want to give them the strategies to help them monitor themselves, if you will. So Superintendent Davis, is there a update report? How widespread are we going to pursue such restorative programs as the HOUSE, Leader in Me, PBIS, those that help with preventing the disproportionate amount of suspensions?
Yes, ma'am, through the chair. It's definitely going to be a centralized focus. It's something that me and team members that in my former lives and those who we've come in to transition the new team in Hillsborough, it's going to be a centralized area of focus. We have got to make certain that we have proactive strategies through restorative practice. And every school will be required to implement and build a positive behavior intervention support initiative plan. And that's only going to be able to highlight and start to sensationalize and identify those who are doing the right things, whether it be being a table coach, whether they're walking down the hallway picking up trash, whether they're really learning their own task. You know, we want to make certain that we highlight every positive thing, item and action that we can in order to create this mindset. Now, there's going to be incentives attached and that's just some of the ways we have to do it nowadays. And, but we are going to have to have a full core press related to positive behavior supports. But it's all about self-reflection as well, being able to have restorative practices within our schools and what those restorative practices looks like, whether it's student accountability boards. Those are going to have to happen. That's going to take training to get off the ground. So while this will be initiatives that we start to see in the first nine weeks that we develop and implement, you will start seeing the launch of it in particular areas, maybe the second nine weeks, after we identify, train students, train educators, create those times to be able to do it. And we want to make certain that we also have, you know, continue to train every one of our administrative staff and teachers about what those positive behavior support interventions look like in order to create that type of mindset. Because one thing we never want to do, you know, it's very easy to identify, you know, students that do things wrong and to highlight that. And all that does is create this giant gap and particular separation where that student continues to sound out. You know, everyone wants to be recognized for doing great things, you know, and being involved and actively being a leader in their classroom. So that's the mentality and the mindset that we have to create and no different than the ones we have to create related to keep children in school. They cannot learn unless they're in front of us. Now, there's got to be consequences and accountability, but there's got to be a progressive discipline, you know, a pattern to be implemented in order to better, to have greater successes.
And my final remark, and we are reminded that when a school, full fidelity, that is, when they follow a model such as Leader in Me, PBIS, the HOUSE system, full fidelity, the absences decrease, the grades go up, and the suspensions and the referrals decrease. So it's a winning formula and it's worth us all striving to handle that in each of our schools. So I'm going to go ahead and defer. My time is up. So thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gray. Dr. Hahn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've talked a lot this morning from staff. We've heard from the superintendent and Ms. Gray around social, emotional learning. And, you know, I would like you to just take some time maybe to discuss the difference between social, emotional learning and mental health therapeutic services and how we utilize both. Because sometimes I think they're used into, the terms are used interchangeably. And there is a remarkable difference between those two things and how we utilize them in schools. And I don't know who wants to address that, but.
Yes, ma'am, through the chair. Ms. Tanner?
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Hahn. So in schools, when we provide counseling to students, we really focus on skill building. Students learn in their classrooms, social skills, expectations. And then students need a reinforcement or to be re-taught and modeled in a more intimate setting. So with our mental health plan and our student services staff, when we work with students individually or in small group, we are reemphasizing those social, emotional learning skills and reteaching them, per se. But social, emotional learning is really a way of life. It's what should be breathed in with the teacher and their staff every day. They should be teaching explicitly those types of learning skills and social skills to the students and giving them opportunities to practice. When we're talking about mental health therapy and mental health counseling, that's definitely a more intensified intervention. So we may be doing cognitive behavior therapy, trauma-informed therapy that really is specific goals for the student. And looking at an individualized plan that can, you know, take sessions and involve the family, involve more consultation with other stakeholders, with the student. with other stakeholders, with the student, and it's definitely a more intensified level of support. So social emotional learning is that skill-building process, while therapy is really working on the emotional and mental health wellness of the child. Now, sometimes that can be blurred because you are providing skills and strategies for students to be able to cope with what mental health disorder they have. But professional therapists and those that are qualified to give therapy, provide those type of services, while every educator should be modeling social emotional learning skills.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. And so the numbers that you captured in your mental health data collection, that reflects mental health therapeutic services, not SEL that would take place, maybe integrated in a lesson. That's, these are hard numbers that reflect mental health therapeutic services.
So the school-based services are, that are in the community, or sorry, school-based services do revolve around more skill-building. So it can reemphasize social emotional learning skills in a more intimate setting. When you're talking about community-based therapy?
Right.
Right, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And just one more question, I'll get back in the queue. Baker Acts, as of March, we had 202 Baker Acts, and yet 171 were referred, of those students were referred to Central Florida Health. Is that, explain to me, I would have assumed for every student that's Baker acted, we would have a referral to Flori-, I'm sorry, Central Florida Health. Why is there not a one-on-one? And there may be a very good reason for it. I just want to understand the data.
Mr. Keller, go ahead, Chair.
So, thank you. So the question about the Baker Acts, some of our students that get Baker acted, when they're at the facility, there, they can fill out like a release of information to share back with the schools. So that we, and it's with the family and the student, both have to sign consent for that, so that the school knows that they're Baker acted. Because some, we don't, if they're not Baker acted from school, we wouldn't even realize that unless the parent or the CCSU, what's it's called, comes back to us so we can follow up on that.
Okay.
Now, the ones we do know about, some of those students, like already are receiving therapy, and they may, this might be, you know, multiple Baker Acts, things like that. So they may already be receiving intensive services elsewhere. So we may offer the services through Central Florida, but the parent says, you know, we have services in place, we're happy with that. But we make it clear to all our schools through our, you know, even like change of placement process, things like that. Students that need the support, that's what Central Florida is there for. So come to us, we'll do the referrals, we'll hook them up with one of those agencies. It's just sometimes they either already have the therapy going on, or the parent kind of declines that.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. And I'd just like to request, as a follow-up after today's workshop, a list of schools with full-time social workers or psychologists. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hahn. Okay. Great questions from our board members so far. And thank you again to superintendent and staff for your work on this plan. I just had a couple requests and then a question. First, as far as the mental health budget, this is obviously a very 30,000-foot view of the budget. And I think it would be prudent for us as board members to have a much more detailed version of your budget for mental health for the school year. So my request would be, could we get more detail and to drill down on where these are? It's, you can call it a budget, but it's really just a chart. So I'd like a real budget, if you don't mind. So I think it's important for us as board members, is our responsibility to know where those dollars are being spent exactly. So that was one request. The second request I have with regard to the slideshow or the presentation on Slide 15, which is the district-wide mental health data collection through May, I'm curious to know how we compare to other like-size or kind school districts. Sometimes it helps us to get a better grasp of where we are when we see data from surrounding school districts, whether they are in this Tampa Bay area, or could be more demographically like-kind school districts, perhaps Orange County, or, you know, Palm Beach County, or Duval County, you know. So I'd be curious to see how we compare to other school districts, if we have that data available to us. And then I'm curious, from a board member perspective, also, I was noticing there's about 13 policies in our, in our board policies, our school district, that touch on mental health, specifically student services. And so I have all of the board policy numbers I'd like to share with you, to see if there are any policies that need to be updated, or any recommendations that you and your staff have. Because we do have, we're in a policy cycle, and we do have a policy workshop coming up. So this would be the time to make sure that all of our policies are aligned with the mental health plan of the school district. Okay? And then the last question I have is, I just want to understand, maybe, because we talked about a lot of great things and a lot of good services, so I'm going to kind of be the devil's, play the devil's advocate here. But what are some of the biggest challenges that you, we've had, or that you foresee for our school district? And what can we do as board members to help and support you making sure that this plan is effective for our students in our school district?
So through the chair, and I'll answer all these. The first thing, I think September 8th, the mental health plan comes to the board identified. Is there a different date? Sorry?
The mental health plan came...
Okay.
At the end of July.
Okay, okay.
It was through August 1st.
Okay, so I thought, say, I know I saw it somewhere. But I will resend that plan for everyone to see, and it has the itemized budget all the way through every element. But I'll make certain that it's emailed this evening. Also, like-size districts, I'll try to see if we have accessibility to some of their internal mainframe data sets, and we'll work to determine that. And then policies, we'd love to review because we always, this is the perfect time to do so, to match. So overall, the biggest things we have is sometimes this availability, I mean, Mrs., Dr. Hahn just talked about full-time staff. So we have social workers in our schools and psychologists in our schools, but overall, they share schools. So being able to have, you know, at scale, so being able to have individuals that are parked at each, every one of our schools will, would help tremendously. I had schools calling me yesterday, they wanted a social worker to be able to chase down some attendance, and we had to move individuals from one location to the next. But what, you know, some of the times we're facing is that, is the stigma that we may, sometimes children may not feel that we have the resources to be accessible to them when they're walking the hallways. So whether it's suicide prevention, you know, models, whether it's truly understanding, whether it's drug prevention, whether it's, you know, trauma-informed, we have got to just do a large campaign, and everyone standing united, to be able to push forward with how we're going to address every pocket of mental health within this organization, and be able to be thorough about what curriculums that we are going to implement, what resources that we have aligned, and how we're not only just focused on the child, but everyone holistically in the community. So we see that we start to lose our children in the early ages related to social emotional activities and interactions. So from our standpoint, I think we've got to do, we can do a better job, and the board can help me through this process, opening up three-year-old and four-year-old programs to get our students into our schools. That way we can have a better connectivity to them about how they interact with, you know, with each other from social interaction, but also academic interaction as well. And those can be stood up in partnerships with local early childhood providers. And then we will look at those at particular schools that do not have sufficient capacity within our community. So being able to identify one or two, you know, particular, you know, classrooms that we can provide, but also making certain that we connect and hire teachers that we own from our perspective. There are a number of teachers that go in three-year-old programs or that have credentials, but we want them to be certified to the Department of Education, so that we can own them, train them, use our core curriculum, and have a better accessibility. And I think you'll start to see that. And then the other thing is making certain that we have true progressive discipline within our code of student conduct, where it's truly identified of interventions that were taking place explicitly to be able to help the mindset of children. I know it's a lot, but we, there's a lot to do.
There's a lot of work to do. There's a lot of work to do. And I thought of one other question while you were answering that, is, you know, how, how do we know? Like, we can look at the data, and we can measure some of the effectiveness through the numbers. But, you know, what, how do we engage our students and parents to know whether or not we're doing a good job, and how effective, you know, we are? Do we have a method of getting feedback from our students and from our parents on that? Or are we just strictly looking at numbers? Or, you know, how do we know?
So through the chair, I do believe we have a climate survey that we send to every one of our constituents. And we just got to do, we just got to have a full court press of getting that out there, getting it out there and pushing it to be able to get feedback. We will be refining all of the surveys that we have holistically as a district to make sure it aligns, and it really captures the information we need in order to be successful. So we could do that, you know, we can implement that in a, you know, in a baseline beginning of the year to the end of the year to see the overall progression, so they can look at services and determine overall effectiveness. But I think that the more that we can get the pulse of how well we're doing, I think the better that we'll be able to refine and make adjustments and validate and duplicate best practices.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for your responses. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Next up, we have a member Perez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, when we speak of mental health today, we find that we have to look through a lens that includes a new normal, especially in addressing the needs of not only our students, but also their families. So we're finding that our communities, their needs are greater today than they were a year ago, than when I went out on the mental health tours. And that, at that time, we heard over and over again that here in Hillsborough County, they did not know the services that were available to them and their families. And these conversations and connections are being, are being had and being made. So I'm, I so appreciate that this change took place, especially in collaboration with other counties and other districts, in order to share what we, our strengths are, but also with the possibility of learning what we don't have, and adding that also into our mental health box, you know, for our students. So we are listening, and we will be providing access to those services in a very direct and innovative way. So I'm excited, Superintendent, to be a part of this Mental Health Days pilot here in Hillsborough County for our students and their families, and see how this helps our families and their needs for mental health services. So I have some questions. How often do the staff have training in diversity?
So through the chair, we're in the process of building out our plan, working through Dr. Vera Torado's, you know, initiatives in our plan. So we are in the process of development. Once we get it, we'll make certain that we, we launch that to the entire board and to the entire organization. I'm not certain right now of how often that we, that we provide professional development. I know that there is professional development built into the SELs every single day, and into our curriculums, and just to talk about how they can, you know, interact, you know, with every learner and for that social, building social capacity along the way. And that's inbuilt with Second Step, that will be with seven mindsets, seven mindsets in all the curriculum that we have, that's also inclusive. But we do understand that we have to have additional services provided to our students every day. Dr. Vera Torado, I know this, you're in the back row, anything else you want to add? Okay, we're good, okay.
And there was 2,400 telehealth sessions. Was that just last year?
Go ahead, Mr. Keller.
That was actually just since March, since students were out of school. We ran the numbers. We just wanted to make sure that our partners were providing those services. We just ran the numbers, and now those are numbers of sessions for students. And those sessions could be individual counseling, family counseling, psychiatric appointments, all via telehealth. So it's really nice, they've, they transferred all those means to the telehealth platform.
And in comparison to last year, did that grow? Did that?
Yes, it did grow. Last year, for data collection, we didn't realize really at the time that the telehealth would be so prominent as it now. So going forward, that will be a new metric that we study, telehealth, both from school sites, from school students' personnel, and from our community partners. So that'll be a metric we will be analyzing.
Fabulous. And can you provide the number of referrals that you provided in 2020?
Through the chair, can you identify referrals? Like such a, what, excuse me?
The referrals for therapy?
So, for 2020, 1920-20, the number of students referred for mental health services was over 20,000 students.
Okay.
Almost 20,400 students.
In comparison to 2019?
So the comparisons are pretty close. It was right around the same number. What we did see is a little drop-off when the pandemic hit, just because students weren't in school, so just re-engaging the students. So the numbers were comparable right until about that March area, and that's when we really tried to focus on the telehealth piece and getting more referrals out.
Fabulous, okay. And then I have one more question. For the public knowledge and education, can you speak to how our community partners also provide resources to the families beyond mental health services?
Through the chair, Ms. Ayah.
Sure. You know, we've had many partnerships with Mendez Too Good for Drugs, with Daco, where they have curriculum that they have, that they work with our students through Daco. They have counselors that come in that works with groups of students on drug addiction and other things. But truly through our local planning team, which you've heard us reference quite a bit, those are local area mental health providers that we have that work with us when we see a gap and a need, that they fill that in and they work with us to be able to provide any services additionally we may need.
Do they provide resources, like for housing, for food services?
Yes.
Those type of resources?
Yes, we definitely work through our social workers, and we have ASO through the Children's Board, where we get our parents any type of services that they may need. And also through the mental health dollars, making sure that they can get to their appointments and things like that.
Thank you.
Board member Chair, to add to that, one of our community partners, Success for Kids and Families, they totally focus on wraparound services. So when a family is in need, they look at clothing, assistance with housing, food, whatever other services they might need other than mental health counseling. They provide that evaluation with the family to determine needs. So one of our community partners, that is their sole responsibility.
And when we speak here regarding mental health services, we look at the whole child, and their environment, and their families. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Perez. Since I'm next in the queue, I guess I'll recognize myself. So it's, it's very refreshing, actually, today as a school board member, to actually starting to talk about the work again, and how we are able to provide services for our students. So Ms. Brown and your team, thank you for the comprehensive presentation. My question kind of piggybacks off of some of the comments made by Member Perez. And I really want to focus on what happened from March, when we had to close our school-based services, up until now. Can you kind of just give us, Mr. Superintendent, can you kind of give us a feel for what happened when we kind of, the school-based services obviously were limited? What did we do for those students who are already in our pipeline? And then how do we identify students during the time of pandemic? And then I have a follow-up after that.
Yes, sir, through the chair. As Mr. Keller spoke, and I'm going to let him get back through it, a lot of our work had to, you know, we moved immediately to remote. So the services continued. Social worker services continued. We continued to have, you know, identification of meetings with cohorts to be, and practitioners. And then we also had to make certain that, that you saw, when we asked about the number of referrals, that number is inclusive, is added on related to the telehealth that's taking place. So we, while we had 2,000 cases related to the telehealth, we knew that there were so, potentially so many more. But those were beginning to identify the individuals that we needed to continue with. I'll let Mr. Keller identify what, how we expanded.
Yeah, so that's exactly right. The key was, we wanted to continue services, to continue to wrap around the telehealth, leave that an option. But when I looked at the numbers, even of new referrals from March, through our school base, from what I saw from first semester to second semester, was about 800 new referrals. So even though the students were out of school, student services personnel were still identifying students that need those, those school-based referrals, which is great. And through Central Florida since March, a little over 240 referrals. So those continued also. And we want to, as this new model goes outward, some brick and mortar, some e-learning, continue to reinforce that these options are available for those students.
And then my final question, Mr. Superintendent, and as we begin to transition our students back to brick and mortar, starting next week, are we looking from a mental health perspective to anticipate a triage of, you know, services that we're going to have to provide within the first nine weeks? And are, do you feel that we are prepared to handle our students coming back?
So the beauty is, through the chair, the beauty is, is that, you know, we have external partners. So if we get to a point where we're somewhat overwhelmed with students transitioning back to 31st, we're able to get to connect with external partners to come in, to be able to wrap their arms around our students. So we stand prepared. We know that we have a blended model of services for e-learning and so on, and brick and mortar, and they may be spread between the both, between both of them. Spread then, the same way we are with educators. But we are prepared to get to, to leverage external providers in order to connect and as often. We'll note within the first week or two, determine what the, the volume of services may be needed on both ends. And then we'll regroup as a team and determine what we need to leverage in order to make those connections. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Member Kona. Member Stewart?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Superintendent and staff for the presentation. Although lengthy, I think that it is worth our time, especially as from my seat... Although lengthy, I think that it is worth our time, especially as from my seat, what I see in having a different role and being a board member with safe and sound for a very long time and having a very close relationship with Julian Holt and her office and the Baker Acts, which we did just have a meeting with the superintendent around that topic. Some of my concerns are, Members Snively, thank you for the question around the budget, because I think that my question was similar in what is the shortfall here? Because what we're providing, I know we're not being paid for 100% out of Tallahassee. So I would like to see a similar, what is our actual cost versus what we're being funded for? Because there is a shortfall. So when we do our job and go to Tallahassee, how do we advocate for those dollars and say, we're a large district, here's what we're providing, we're doing everything you've asked us to do via legislation, but the money isn't enough? So we need that information in order to be advocates for you to continue to do your work. I have some concerns around some of the numbers, especially around some of the telehealth. So are our, I know outside agencies are actually providing telehealth. Are our people providing telehealth as well? So are those numbers inclusive of referrals and our numbers? Because I'd like to see that broken out, especially since some of the money, again, that comes from Tallahassee is specifically directed to outside providers. What are we having to pick up as individual, as an, as an agency for telehealth that, that is now an added, additional item that our staffs are having to take on and not just seeing kids sitting in front of them, but now taking on telehealth as something that they're doing? And how are they doing that? What are the protocols? What are, I mean, obviously our counselors are not trained in telehealth, they've been trained to sit in front of students. So what does that look like? And I don't expect an answer on this immediately, we can, I'm sure there's gonna be follow-up. I, I still have concerns around the Baker Act numbers, similarly to Member Kona's question and Member Perez's, because I'm curious, the number of law enforcement Baker Acts, that total number for this year, I'm concerned that in March, we stepped out of school. So there could have been a large number of Baker Acts that we are not aware of, because the reporting, as Mr. Keller stated, is not required. And my fear is that we have children that were Baker acted that will be coming back into our system that we don't know about. And I have personal experience knowing that this happens, children get Baker acted, they don't have to tell us, they come back medicated, they come back with issues that we're not aware of. So how were we following those numbers? And do we have target schools where we see more trauma than others that, and I don't know that that is all public consumption, but I think there are trends that we could probably follow. The other piece of that is, we have, I know at least one school that has full-time mental health counselors on staff. They're not paid for by the district, but they are on staff. So how does that school compare in its level of trauma and the things that are happening in that community versus other schools of similar and like? And is that a model that we need to be talking about and looking at? And it's a community school, so I know that, that's something that is a wraparound service that happens at that school and something that's very important, but are we comparing that information to some of our other schools and is that something we need to be looking at? So my questions for this workshop are, how are we looking differently? I know what we're doing and what we've been doing, but how are we looking differently at the world in which our children and our students are going to be coming back into or continuing with and the trauma that they may have experienced and what all of this is, how this is all different for them? Not just, not just if, if it were an incident at home, but it's traumatic to be home for as long as they have been. And the stress levels for adults has been high. I can only imagine for students it has been high, as I know for my own student, it has been high. So I have concerns around that. The other concern I have, and something that I think, again, we need to start talking about, Start With Hello is not mentioned here at all. And that's a program that I know that we have been doing and working through since Park, before Parkland, actually, since Sandy Hook. And that's not mentioned at all in here and where we are with those programs and that, than that school-based option. And I have an issue with the fact that we don't start mental health and emotional stuff, all we show is from sixth grade forward. And the number of elementary children that get Baker acted in this community is high. So I'm concerned that we're not showing those numbers as well. And then, again, the issue around the fact that we have to call in, and I know this is part of the conversation that I have with the superintendent, and I haven't found the policy yet, maybe Ms. Snively found it, because we were wondering if it was a policy. But the number of children that actually get Baker acted out of our system and following an actual file, a direct file through the state, most of the children who get Baker acted are released. They don't even stay the full 72 hours. So I'd like to see us taking a deeper dive in what that looks like. Why are children being taken out of school for non-threatening incidents? And our policy around who does the Baker acting and what that can look like and look differently? Other districts are doing it differently. We still call in law enforcement without the clinical background to do the Baker Act. It's extremely traumatizing to a student. And so I can, will continue conversations until my departure with the superintendent around how we look at that differently. And I know that's an internal procedure and, as may not even be a policy, it's a procedure around how we actually keep children from being re-traumatized and how we make sure that law enforcement is not the one who's actually doing the Baker Act and we find different ways. Again, some of these children are being Baker acted, sent to a facility and they're not even being, they're immediately being released. They're not even staying 24 hours, let alone the full 72. So those are my comments. Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, Member Stewart. Before we go to Member Gray, I'm gonna ask if we can have Ms. Schamberger, since she hasn't had an opportunity to, to participate yet, and then we'll go back to Member Gray and then Member Hahn and then Member Perez. So, Member Schamberger?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Superintendent's staff, thank you so much for the presentation this morning. Very good information today. My question, certainly, well, first, let me just say that we know that many of our students certainly bring these traumas with them into the classroom, a classroom that's often not equipped with the ability to really deal with these traumas. And so, but you know, sometimes the genesis is in the schools and sometimes the genesis is outside of the school, which is something I know that you guys are aware of. But what I'm really interested in today, looking at slide number 15 on the mental health data question, I'd like to, if you could, can you provide myself and the board with just an overlay of the demographics, the breakdown of these numbers? You know, I'm really interested to see who's receiving these services or who has the greatest need for these services, really so we can identify if there's any gaps. I'm really concerned when we talk about the Transformation Network, Mr. Superintendent, I just want to make sure that we are, that we do have adequate services for our staff and students in these schools. As we know, socioeconomic certainly plays an issue into some of the traumas that these students are bringing to school. And so I'd just like to see who's getting the services and if there's any gaps that need to be identified. So if that's possible, Mr. Superintendent, if you can provide that, that would be great. Lastly, I just really wanted to ask too also about, oh, if you could also, if you could restate it, I apologize if you talked about it, but what are we doing proactively to address some of these mental health issues or mental wellness, you know, issues proactively in the community? You know, this, this mental health matters is, you know, technically very reactive, as it should be, but what are we doing to engage our communities and our students outside of the school district more proactively? Are we doing anything?
So through the chair, this is where we have to have a, a single launch of rebranding, re-messaging of our social-emotional learning platform. What we, what are we going to do to take on the overall work to not, to connect the entire community? And I know we do a good job in our community partnership schools, but we, it's gotta be holistically throughout. So we are, we are working to, to launch that, that initiative and also have additional steps of what we're going to do at particular, within particular geographical areas, within particular grade bands, in order to create that expansion. So I do agree, it needs to be able to have a, a deeper, you know, touch with our community because our stakeholders are openly our first educators and we've got to find ways that we can help them be successful. And so oftentimes, we focus on children, what happens, you know, between the, the time they either get on the bus, arrive at our school, and when they leave, but we've got to figure out what happens when they leave our schools and in that big area between they leave our schools and come to our schools and be able to focus. And that's where you can get some of the greatest movement intellectually, socially, academically, and it's gonna take, you know, a time to figure out how we remove barriers. How do we get individuals to stay connected? And we're gonna have to go to communities and talk about offerings that we have and how we work together and how this has to be one cohesive unit in, in our efforts. Ms. Brown, Ms. Seiya, anything that, if anybody wants to add, are we good?
So, Mr. Superintendent, thank you so much, Madam Chair, Ms. Schamberger, Madam Chair. We are working on a student advisory, that's one thing, and we want to make sure that that advisory group of students is a diverse group of students, right? And that represents the cross-section and the multitude of, of differences we have in our community. We are also going to implement an advisory that will be for members of the community to also give us input on what they perceive the concerns and issues to be for our students and their families. And we will work to create solutions based on the feedback we get from them. So in addition to the students, we'll also have community, and we're looking forward to engaging the community and our students, because we really know that our students have lots of answers for us and we want to elevate their voices. So those are a couple of things that we'll be doing.
Yes, and she made a good point, through the chair and Ms. Schamberger, we have got to get to a point where we host parent academies and also community learning series. And that means that we go across this entire district and talk about families, how they are actively engaged, what resources they can connect to, you know, how do they help their child set short-term and long-term goals educationally, financial literacy, you name it. We have got to get out there and launch that, and that's going to be the second, the second quarter to, to, between, well, let's just say October, November, that we will have that launch and we'll start going, me and my team, and we'll go into our community to start to address community issues that truly impact the everyday workings of our schools.
Very good. Thank you so much for that update. Just one more quick question. I do agree with all of that. It is very important, because we know we live in a world today where civility has become a novelty, right? And it's just really unfortunate, so we have to get in front of some of these things if we're going to restore civility in our community and certainly in our schools. Lastly, just one quick question, Madam Chair, if you don't mind. I just wanted to ask, that what is the timeline for this diversity and racial bias training? I know it says that 300 support staff to date. Now, when we talk about superintendent, the district as a whole, what is our timeline to, to get this training done, especially with our teachers who are, who are in front of these students, who need to be able to have some culturally sensitive or culturally, you know, relevant trainings and things like that? Like, what's the timeline for this to take place in the district?
So through the chair, it, it needs to happen now. I mean, it, it needs to happen, it needs to be, it cannot be a shot in the arm. It has to be continuous. So this is the, you know, reason, we've been meeting with Dr. Vera Torado and also the NAACP and also our, our internal members to devise a plan that mandates when you are hired, the training starts and it continuously continues within our organization. Dr., Ms. Brown, you want, anything you want to add to that?
Thank you, sir. The only thing I'd like to add to that is, as we've started this training and recognizing the importance of acknowledging some of the things that are going on in the community around certain types of social injustices or unrest, how it impacts our students' mental health. It's critical for us to do that. And so though we've started this training, and this is something we've done recently with our, with our, specifically around the social injustice and racial unrest that exists, this is a recent training for us. And what we'd like to do is roll it out to all of our Student Services staff members so that they can be resources at the school level to support teachers as they work with their students. Because what we know is that our teachers are the first source for our students. They go to their teachers before they go to a student services member. So we want the teachers to be well-equipped, to be responsive and supportive and, and help our students as they grapple with some of the things they've experienced and witnessed while they've been away from school, away from us.
Very good. And let's not forget our bus drivers, who are in essence first responders in most cases as well. And so Superintendent, thank you so much for your commitment to ensuring that this does happen quickly. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Schamberger. All right, back to Member Gray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the board members, and I want to thank every one of you too for touching on the very notions that I wanted to pursue. The first one, we, we talk about, well, communities make our schools, we know that, right? So in, in my mind, the outreach is critical for our communities to receive the necessary tools to restore them, not only themselves, but their children. So Superintendent Davis, we talked previously about the Family Community Centers. We're rebranding that from the centers that we had, such as the Sanchez Center. And I also mentioned that that would be great to expand these centers to our high-needs communities for one important reason would be mental health, but for pragmatically, for our, for our Wi-Fi, hotspots, first aid, you know, those needs that our high-needs communities must, must, you know, they have to have these fulfillments. Do you have a timeline or trajectory of expanding these Family Community Centers?
So through the chair, right now, we're standing up the two that we reimagining, re-evolving the two that we currently have now. And once we get that fluent, related to having the necessary resources on, on site and to be able to connect our communities and address any deficiencies or any needs that may be, then once we get up and running, we will start to expand. One thing we want to do is we want to get it right. So when we made the commitment two months ago to, to rebrand or re-image, and you know, we've been going through some, you know, some very interesting times, once we get off the ground, get children back into our, to our schools and we start to identify particular cases, particular needs, we will start to see what we can do and identify as best practices and also start to refine, and then begin to look at trends and patterns through analytics to determine what particular areas need the expansion to create, you know, centers such as Just and Sanchez. You want to speak a little bit, Ms. McCray?
How you doing? Good, good morning. So one of the things I would like to add, in addition to just reimagining our two current community centers, is that we have uncovered an opportunity to bring fragmented pieces across the district together in one cohesive collective unit. So I remember in a meeting in the past, we talked about services, for example, in the Dover area. Well, we already have adult and community schools doing GED programs, we have our migrant programs that are out there, and so they're working kind of in silos. This is an opportunity to think about, what do we already have? How do we bring those together? And then layer then our mental health pieces with that for our new model. And so as we move across into the year, we're gonna look at those pieces, we're gonna bring those things collectively together and really have a more robust family and community engagement process, way of work, and really, you know, bring up the level of support in our communities.
And through the chair, we'd like to have a, a number of these geographically throughout the entire district, so just easy accessibility, but it's just identifying where the need may be, where the expansion may, you know, may not have services, and try to leverage some of the, you know, the community, you know, partnership school mindset that we can bring to efficiently, do it efficiently, bring to particular areas. So, and I know we have six of those, you know, community partnerships between USF and also UCF, but we got to, we strengthen those on top of what we're doing in Justin Sanchez and then expand that, allow that to grow legs in everyone's district and geographically so that we can have accessibility.
Yeah, and, and we know that strong families will result in stronger children and stronger students in our schools. So the family component and the family center component to me would be a very, very big priority. And thank you, Shay, for working on that. Also, I wanted to ask about the trauma schools, because earlier, was it last year, Members Snively, myself, I brought the National Dropout Prevention Center to, to a workshop. Member Perez, you were there, and Member Hahn. And we, we were all involved in trauma, the ACE, adverse childhood experiences that our high-needs children faced, certainly. And so we committed, thank you, Ms. Brown, for putting the commitment into solidarity, we committed for a pilot at Palm River Elementary. And we will have soon the data that would share that when teachers are taught strategies for handling trauma of the kids, the trauma of the kids, therefore, the kids would have a better education. And we always know that the more educated a teacher gets, the better they are also to help the children learn. So the model was, which was been proven nationally over and over again, we did have a pilot, we do have a pilot, and now with COVID, we actually have to think about our staff as well, they're going through trauma. But let me get to the point of the question. How would we imagine, or are we going to imagine, that the trauma-based school, the teaching model from the National teaching model from the National Dropout Prevention, are we planning to expand versus just keep it at one school? And that's the question I wanted to ask. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am, through the chair, you said initially is that we're still waiting on the final analytics from, for Palm River. And once we get that information, we'll be able to determine if it was efficient and effective to be able to connect with students. There's a lot of indicators that says it's positive with mindsets, interaction with children, interaction with adults, and ongoing supports. We've had, you know, Zoom call with Dr. Bill Daggett to be able to have those conversations. So, once we have those final numbers in, we'll be able to review with the team, and we hope they come in by, I think, by September. We hope they come in soon, and that way, we can rally and determine what worked, what didn't, what we can do differently in order to determine whether or not there's going to be expansion. And it's not about just expansion. What's the right fit and the right leader to implement this initiative in order for it to be effective? Ms. Brown, anything? We're good?
No, and I thank you again, Ms. Brown, for continuing. And yes, the data, and Superintendent Davis, you are a data person, and I would say that that should show and reveal that hopefully it is working efficiently, or how do you want to say, throughout the teacher's performance with these children. Last question. I was looking at the alcohol EDU, and it mentions about how the, how this will help high schoolers prevent alcohol abuse, prescription drug abuse, but in the statements I read, it didn't include vaping. And I would say that since vaping is an epidemic, not really going away, even though since March, we might have thought so, can we not include vaping in those statements as part of the alcohol slash EDU, or somehow make sure vaping is directed as far as a mental health concern?
Yes, ma'am, through the chair, absolutely. I do believe it's embedded in there as well. Ms. Capucci, you want to address?
Through EverFi, they do have a whole separate vaping module that students can go through, but vaping is specifically covered in our HOPE curriculum, and we want to stay as close to the mandated requirements as possible. So, right now, it will be part of the substance abuse and use and embedded for the following this year, 2020, 2021 school year. So, if we use EverFi, they would have a whole separate module for vaping, but in the other education pieces, specifically life skills, we talk about vaping, and then in our HOPE curriculum, those pieces are touched.
And Ms. Capucci, I want to also share my appreciation for you continually trying to get the HOPE classes, the health opportunities for PE teachers in our high schools in a more, let's just say, meaningful way versus being a way far away elective. And we'll work on that. You can see that Superintendent Davis is very much anchored into the mental health, so I'll work on him with that goal. And I now better get off the megaphone, or I'll be in trouble. So, thanks. Bye-bye.
It's a good thing we don't give out megaphones. So, thank you, Member Gray. Dr. Han?
Thank you, Member Snively. I just want to expand on a question that Member Schamberger asked around working, what are we doing in our community around mental health or SCL and behaviors? And I just want to add to that, that I think that working with our after-school programs, post YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, to get them to integrate these SCL behavior strategies into our after-school programming. Because, you know, kids are basically outside of the home from, you know, 7:30, 8:00 AM until 5:00, 6:00 PM at night, and that's just an added opportunity and opportunity to, you know, integrate those strategies across the day for our students, help them, generalize them from different types of settings, and work with our community partners in the after-school space around that, which would just enrich those programs, I believe. And then a comment, again, around Ms. Schamberger's, she asked a lot of the same things that I was thinking around diversity training. I know last year that our folks in the Turnaround School Division were having the principals participate in cultural competency training, and it was probably done in a silo. I don't believe it was done in collaboration with the Office of Diversity. The Office of Diversity knew about the training, but I don't, there was no real tight collaboration between the two divisions. I don't know with the change in leadership across the district if that training is still occurring, but I just don't want people in the community to think that those types of things had not been happening. They were happening in silos, and they, you know, we weren't talking about it at board meetings and workshops, but that training had been occurring across the district. But my last question is around the numbers. 20,000, 20,397 students received mental health services. Does that number include in-school as well as Central Florida? And so, how do you control for duplication in that? So, what if a student started and was referred to the guidance counselor, and then that same student is referred to Central Florida? Is there duplication in that number? And the same in regard to referral within school, social worker referring to a psychologist? How do you control for the duplication in that number, in that 20,000 number?
Mr. Kelleher?
So, these numbers originated from the state. When this law came out, they wanted each district to keep track of the number of students that were referred and that received services. And their stipulation was that you count a student one time.
Okay.
So, if they were referred 10 times, you'd only count them once as being referred and receiving services. So, when we put this out to schools, we give them like an FAQ of how you kind of problem-solve around those numbers. So, we hope there's no duplications in those, and we try to make it as clear as possible to those sites. Now, as far as school and community-based, we do break those numbers up, and I have those. I presented it combined just for brevity's sake, but as far as school-based counseling, over 15,000, and then community-based referrals, over 5,000. So, that's kind of how those broke up.
So, if community-based is over 5,000, where did the 500 number come from that you spoke of in regard to referrals to Central Florida? Because, and maybe I'm thinking about it wrong. I'm thinking every time you refer community-based, it's through Central Florida. Is that wrong? Of me to think that?
Our schools refer all the time to the community-based providers, so they might have, each school has localized kind of providers that they have. They may be referring schools a lot. Where Central Florida kind of comes in are those barriers. So, if a family's having difficulty with payments or just a higher level of care, the school will reach out to the district clinician, who will go to the school, problem-solve with the team, and will do that specialized referral to Central Florida to make sure that family is followed up with. So, that's kind of the difference with the two.
So, just so I understand, so there's in-school referrals, and then there's community referrals that are outside of Central Florida? And Central Florida refers to those community partners that are in here, right? Daco and, so, so we're, we have three avenues then for students to get services, in-house, community partners, and then we have this whole other set of community partners. And do we only build through Central Florida? We do not bill the referrals that go out through other community partners?
Correct. And we have, our social workers every year do a resource map within their communities. And so, with that resource map, we find out the different services that are available within that area. And many of our Student Services staff have relationships with those groups, and as Mr. Kelleher said, it's once there's, if there's a problem or a barrier, and if we have those students that have a more immediate threatening type of a need, that will go through Central Florida. But we still refer to many different agencies.
Okay, so the, so the Tier One students are served within the school system, and then Tier Two and Three are what we push out through Central Florida and the community?
Absolutely.
And we're capturing that community data as well?
Yes.
As this, and is that what's in this 20,000 number? All of it, all those three things we just talked about?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you, Dr. Han. And just to note, it is about, about 10 more minutes until our workshop ends, so we've got Member Stewart and Member Perez, and then I just have a couple of housekeeping items. So, Member Stewart?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to expound a little bit on Member Schamberger's questions and comments around being in the community and community education. So, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Superintendent, but I would also like to see us do a healthier and better partnership with Safe and Sound because some of that work has started. And I think that over, between March and now, they have done several community listening sessions, and a lot of what we're hearing is exactly what you're talking about, Superintendent, is the ability for parents to understand and find and have the resources that they need for their child is difficult. And I know Member Perez sat in on some of those, and I don't think she was expecting to be the focal point of those listening sessions, but she turned into being the resource for all of the things that parents were looking for, parents and students who were calling in and coming on. So, I would like to, I know we're at the table with Safe and Sound. Obviously, I'm on that board, and we'll stay there, but I know we are part of their mental health group. But if we can maybe ramp up that conversation a little bit more, some of the groundwork is already laid for what you're talking about, doing, Superintendent, in their work, and that's community-based work, and it's data-driven work. So, I'd like to see us stay in that data-driven, you know, where exactly do we need to be having these conversations? But again, a lot of what was coming out of those listening sessions was just a lack of understanding and a lack of knowledge for where the resources are, even at the school level. You know, if my child has an issue and a mental health issue at school, who do I call? And when I call back to the school, who do I get in touch with that can refer me, that can put me in touch with people outside of the school that can help me? And how is that tracked, and what does that mean for my child? And of course, then we get into the conversation around the stigma around mental health and privacy issues, and parents being very sensitive to that stuff. So, I would just encourage us to continue the conversation with Safe and Sound and with Julianne Holt, who is the chair there, and make sure that we are really bleeding into the work that they're doing, which is around violence prevention, but this is a big piece of violence prevention for this community is the mental stability of the community too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Stewart, and Member Perez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the numbers that I don't see or data, and I, and we always fail to present that, is the suicide, the number of suicides in our district.
Board Member Perez, I can share that information with you. In the last, in the last five years or so, with data starting in July of 2015, we've had approximately 15 students die by suicide, as reported. Sometimes families, for privacy's sake, will not reveal, so some of that information could be found through the medical examiner's office. But looking at our crisis intervention team responding as a district to support schools and families, we've had approximately 15 students. And for the previous school year, 2019, 2023, students who died by suicide.
Okay, so do you feel that your suicide assessments, there were 2,723 assessments, do you feel that those prevent the suicides?
I think if we save one life by intervening, it's worth it. I know our numbers in Hillsborough as a county are slightly higher than the state. However, it was mentioned that it was important for us to compare neighboring counties as well as size-alike districts to see what their numbers are. When I say slightly higher, the numbers, as you're probably very familiar, are reported in terms of cases, students 18 and younger who have died by suicide at a rate per 100,000 individuals. So, our rates, and I do have a little bit of that data that I can also share with you. As a state from 2010 to approximately 2016, we were pretty much hovering around 1.3 to 2 per 100,000 students. In Hillsborough County, we've gone from about 2.8 from 2010 to 2013, dropping a little bit, starting in '13, going to 2016, below 2 per 100,000 students. And like the state, from 2017 to present, we've seen the numbers increase a little bit. So, the statewide suicide rate per 100,000, in the last available data I was able to collect, was 2.4 individuals per 100,000 students. Hillsborough County was 3 per 100,000 students.
Thank you for that information. I know that the last time we provided the information, I was surprised because one would think that where we were focusing our attention for mental health services, the suicides were in other areas where we were not so focused on, you know, the mental health services. And that's where we were enlightened that we really needed to really focus the mental health services really county-wide in order to prevent those suicides. But thank you very much for that information.
May I add one more comment as well? We talk about partnerships. Our suicide prevention protocol has been revised on a few occasions. Our last revision, which occurred about two and a half years or so ago, we vetted through the University of South Florida, Florida Mental Health Institute, as well as Nova Southeastern University. So, we really rely on our partners to give us feedback to make sure we're doing the right thing in terms of determining the steps in our protocol assessment.
All right, thank you, Member Perez. And I believe that concludes board comments and questions with regard to this workshop today. Did you have anything else that you needed to add, Mr. Superintendent?
Through the chair, do not. I just want to thank this team. They did a really nice job today. They're articulate, and we appreciate the hard work, and we got hard work in front of us. So, we'll continue to help kids save lives and help them make the right decisions every single day within our hallways.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And board members, just as a reminder, each of you should have received a form that looks like this. Some of you have made some comments and questions and requested some follow-up. This would be the form that you'd want to give the superintendent with the follow-up information and requests that you have mentioned today. So, everyone should have gotten one of these at their place setting. If not, we can get you one. But it evaluates the workshop today and allows us to request additional information from the superintendent and his team that we mentioned during the workshop today. And then also, just as a reminder, we do have, our next workshop is a policy workshop. It is on September the 8th, which is two weeks from today. And so, if you have any policies, and this goes for the superintendent and his staff as well, if there are any policies that need, you feel that you need revision or creation or deletion, then that would be the opportunity for board members to bring that to the attention during the policy workshop. Please work with Mr. Porter. He can certainly assist with policy questions and policy language. And I think that was, that was the only other thing. Do you have anything that you need to mention with regard to that, Mr. Porter? Okay, great. Okay, if there are no further comments, then we will go ahead. Thank you all again for being here and your work. We'll go ahead and adjourn this workshop, and we'll see you back here at 4 o'clock for a regularly scheduled board meeting. Thank you.
We had a terrible hurricane last year, so this will help you heat water, you can make ramen noodles. If you use that specific little plate, you can fry chicken, you can heat food for your family.
A lot of these things you can use to help renovate your home. I re-cocked my bathroom for my dad. That's normally in my dad's wheelhouse, but I was like, it's broken. And we learned how to caw for these.
When I took this class, I learned how to use all of the tools that I should know already. I wanted to take this class because I had no idea how to take apart anything or make anything. Mr. Reeve is in it to win it. He's there to help you out whenever you need help, but he's not going to coddle you, which I really enjoy. So when it came to building cars, and I had no idea where to start, he provides like basic plans and ideas, but he won't hold your hand and tell you exactly where to put everything. He'll let you fail, which I really enjoy.
Mr. Reeve is a great teacher. One thing cool about him, he did, used to work for NASA, which is great. And he's very helpful. He's a great teacher, and I will miss him once I graduate.
It's an awesome school. It's the best, best school in the county. And I would put Leonard's, Leonard's Engineering students against anybody.
This time of year, there's a good chance someone you know or you will get sick from the flu. And there's another illness called coronavirus, which is making people sick. When it comes to any illness like these, you should not be scared, but you should be smart about staying healthy. Here's what to do. Wash your hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. That's as long as it takes to sing the Happy Birthday song two times. Do that a lot, especially every time you eat and after you go to the bathroom. If you can't wash your hands, use hand sanitizer. Don't touch your eyes, nose, or mouth unless you wash your hands first. If you cough or sneeze, do it into your elbow or your sleeve, not in your hand. You can also cover your cough or sneeze completely with a tissue. Then throw the tissue away and wash your hands. If someone is feeling sick, don't get too close to them. No hugs, no high fives. And if you are sick, stay home. That'll keep other people healthy and help you to rest and get better faster. Also, if there are places that a lot of people touch, clean and disinfect them often. If you feel sick, especially if you think you have the flu, call your doctor. And remember, don't be scared. Be smart about staying healthy.
On April 28th, there's two schools from Hillsborough County heading off to the Vex IQ World Championship in Louisville, Kentucky, Coleman Middle School and McLean Middle School to compete for the top prize in Vex IQ. Last year, the Guinness Book of World Records said that the Vex robotics event was the largest event in attendance in the world ever, which is over 1,100 teams last year. And it's going to be even more teams this year. So it's going to be a very, very large event. Just at middle school, in the elementary school IQ, we're looking at maybe 15,000 to 20,000 people showing up. I teach three different robotics sessions. We have Vex VRC, Vex IQ, and NXT Mindstorm. So the event that we're going to in Kentucky is going to be the Vex IQ robot. You're teamed up with another school, and then you try to get a high score on your table. So say there's 80, 80 schools in your division, a computer will match you with eight other schools for maybe eight rounds, and the highest score at the end of those eight rounds will go into the finals. At McLean, this is not a robotics club. It's an asshole robotics curriculum, with eighth grade being high school credit robotics. We're trying to prepare students for STEM jobs in the future. So robotics is a, is a great tool to expose students to STEM-related careers.
The school district of Hillsborough County has developed Fortify FL, a new app that lets you call 911 or contact the authorities about suspicious activity or an emergency, safe, easily, and anonymously. If you see an emergency, all you need to do is open the app, press Call 911 or Send TIP, and fill out the TIP report. This app is available from the Google Play Store and the Apple App Store. Type Fortify FL, install the app, open the app and allow notifications. No sign up or account needed. And remember, if you see something, say something.
Our students deserve greatness. They need to be surrounded by the very best teachers and leaders.
The district-wide vision of preparing students for life is at the heart and soul of all Hillsborough County public schools. To help everyone in the district achieve greatness, we are implementing a new initiative called Achievement Schools.
The achievement school model is really about having a system that is going to fight for equitable practices in order to achieve equal outcomes for students.
The high-need schools selected for the Achievement Schools initiative will receive accelerated, customized support for principals, their leadership teams, and teachers.
I think sometimes there is a stigma out there that students at high-need schools don't have as great of a desire to learn as students at low-need schools. But the students here, they want to learn. They get excited about learning. They want to be successful.
Nine, eight, seven, six, five, four.
Three.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Eight.
My favorite part about being a student here is Memorial, is that the teachers and the administrators, they care about us. It's important for us to know they care because they give us a voice, and it makes us feel like we're important and we can do anything.
The one thing I tell students all the time how to achieve success is for them to believe that there's greatness in them.
Teachers have to believe. And the language we talk professionally has to be around that all kids can succeed and all kids can perform.
The goals of the Achievement Schools are threefold. One, a dramatic increase in the number of students performing at or above grade level in reading and mathematics. Two, every school will achieve three years of a C grade or higher. And three, the number of Achievement Schools will decrease from 50 to zero by 2025.
I would like to see Memorial Middle School as an A school. That's the goal, to make sure that every kid on this campus makes a learning gain, makes a year's worth of growth, and hopefully can start moving towards that proficient level by the time they go to high school.
As the great lyricist Aubrey Drake Graham once said, "When writing the story of your life, don't let anyone else pull the pen." So, my fellow graduates, break away. Be the person you always dreamed of being. Be the great person our teachers, coaches, and parents taught us to be. Never give up on a dream, and as that dream takes you places you never thought you would be, always remember and never forget, who you were!
Everyone has a potential to, to show growth and get to where we want them to go.
You got to know that you have a desire to see every student succeed.
They need to know that you care about them, that you love them, that you're here for them every day, and that they can genuinely trust you.
The sense of urgency in providing support faster to high-need schools is important because when there is work to be done, we don't have any time to waste.
And so when people ask me, "Why now?", I want to respond with, "Why not now?" We are trying to work hard to close the achievement gap.
Because we have to prepare them to be successful in life.
To see a child grow, it's amazing.
You have to experience it to know what I'm talking about, but it's just an amazing thing when you see a kid come from, you know, a really, really tough situation and turn around and make it either across the stage or just, or just past that class.
Hi, I'm Jim Beekman, General Manager of Transportation Services under the Division of Operations, and you're watching Hillsborough Schools TV.
All schools in Hillsborough County can start a walking school bus program to build community, enhance student health, and promote safety. So how do you get started? Here are five simple ways to start a walking school bus program at your school. First of all, let me define what is a walking school bus program. In the simplest terms, it's a group of children walking to school with one or more adults. It can be as informal as two families taking turns walking their children to school. Or something much more structured, with designated meeting points, a timetable, and trained volunteers. The first step is to develop a strong volunteer base of PTA members, parents, and community members. This is so important to ensure that there is an appropriate number of adults to supervise the number of children who are walking. The second step is for the adult volunteers to pick a route and take a test walk. It's important that the adult volunteers identify a safe walking biking route to school. Find a route that includes crosswalks, sidewalks, and crossing lights to ensure safety. The third step is to decide how often the group will walk together and share this schedule with the community. The fourth step is to develop community support, so that you'll have prizes and giveaways to make walking as a group a fun activity. The last step is to invite families who live nearby to walk. Join the movement and start a walking school bus program for health, community building, and safety.
Hi, I'm Melissa Snidely, School Board Chair, representing District Four, and you're watching Hillsborough Schools TV.
You know, what a great opportunity this morning to be able to walk around and visit every one of the 23 sites that we have that were giving the necessary nutrition to our students. I'm at Middleton High School this morning with Principal Brown and her staff. They're doing a great job being gracious, interacting with our students, to be able to give them the meals that they need to be successful.
Flushing Community is huge, because there's so many kids out there that don't even have a right to get here to get the food. And so many foods, kids don't have food at home. So it's, it's pretty big. It's good.
Well, I think it's a wonderful thing you guys are doing, especially for the kids that don't have a whole lot, and it's right here in the community. I think it's a great thing to do this.
You know, this week, it's all about Set Up for Success Week, and this is a start of our set up to success, to be able to give them the breakfast and lunch, so then they can start involving and be involved with enrichment activities on Etsy every single day. So just proud to be a part of it. And it's so, you know, such a great opportunity for us to have greater connections with our communities.
I think you guys are doing a great job. This is a great program you've got going on. I think everybody should participate in it.
It's decreasing the value of food out of the house because they eat so much. So it's a big help.
So starting on Monday, March the 30th, we will be taking our lunches and our devices and our printed packets to our communities. We're in the process right now of looking at our heat map and looking at identifying all the major areas that have, you know, a high number of free and reduced lunch. And we'll be looking at identifying apartments, certain complexes, housing environments, that we can go in that may need us to come to them, to be able to provide the necessary nutrition, and at the same time, give them the instructional packets or devices they need to be successful.
This time of year, there's a good chance someone you know or you will get sick from the flu. And there's another illness called coronavirus, which is making people sick. When it comes to any illness like these, you should not be scared, but you should be smart about staying healthy. Here's what to do. Wash your hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. That's as long as it takes to sing the Happy Birthday song two times. Do that a lot, especially every time you eat and after you go to the bathroom. If you can't wash your hands, use hand sanitizer. Don't touch your eyes, nose, or mouth unless you wash your hands first. If you cough or sneeze, do it into your elbow or your sleeve, not in your hand. You can also cover your cough or sneeze completely with a tissue. Then throw the tissue away and wash your hands. If someone is feeling sick, don't get too close to them. No hugs, no high fives. And if you are sick, stay home. That'll keep other people healthy and help you to rest and get better faster. Also, if there are places that a lot of people touch, clean and disinfect them often. If you feel sick, especially if you think you have the flu, call your doctor. And remember, don't be scared. Be smart about staying healthy.
Hi, I'm Steve Conas, School Board Vice Chair, representing District One, and together we are preparing students for life.
This is our 11th year doing this. It's our school lunch experience, and we have about 250 kids total coming to test 17 different menu concepts. And we hope that they are going to select some to put on the menu for next year.
Today, I'm taste testing for the school district and school nutrition, and I'm excited to see the new dietary options that they're offering.
Honestly, they love it. They get to fill out surveys on iPads. They're all going to walk away with a goodie bag. It's just a really fun event for them, and hopefully they get a good idea as far as what we do for school lunch and breakfast program in Hillsborough County.
This year's concepts include the mini chicken and waffles. On the other table back here, we have a chicken tingo with comida vida.
Everything has been vetted to make sure it's meeting all the standards as far as the whole grain, the sodium, fat, that way we can put it on our menus.
I think it's pretty amazing what is going on with this program, because it gives us the opportunity to see what we have and choose things that students will actually eat instead of having a small variety of things.
There's a mini chicken and waffle sandwich for you with a little sweet honey mustard sauce. Enjoy. Would you like to try some, sir? If you're hungry, we've got a solution. If you're hungry, we've got a solution.
My favorite was probably the biscuit and gravy. It has a lot of flavors to it and the biscuit was very moist and it tasted good.
Love it. I love it.
Well, I think that it's really great because we're identifying new cultures and inviting students to try them more.
Hillsborough County is on the forefront of leading the way with innovation when it comes to school nutrition to serve the students in the most nutritious and beneficial ways possible.
Hi, I'm Karen Perez, School Board Member, serving District Six, countywide, and you're watching Hillsborough Schools TV.
This is our first year going to ESPN Nationals. I think the team just wants a really good hit and a really good way to end up for students.
It's very nerve-wracking, but it's like we already know that we're prepared to go. So we're like, we're confident in ourselves to hit it.
Cheer never stops. When you're committed, you're committed. And every single day since last summer, we've been going, going.
It's like mentally stressful, very stressful, but we push through and we make it and we do a pretty good job.
I think I could speak for the whole team and say that we are very excited. Just being able to say that we went to Nationals and we competed at this level, it's, it just feels really good.
You just encourage each other and you learn to be family with each other. It's so rewarding to be able to work with this team that works that hard.
That's one of the most exciting parts is just being part of a group of all Hillsborough County teams that are going to represent our county. We're a powerful county when it comes to cheerleading and being there at Bloomingdale is really exciting. So I think that's a privilege. I've told the kids that, you know, representing the school is a privilege, so they're rising up to it.
Hi, I'm Lynn Gray, School Board Member for District Seven, countywide, and you're watching Hillsborough Schools TV.
The Gaither Television Kids participated in the Student Television Network's Six-Day Challenge, which is a nationwide video contest where they give the kids a variety of prompts, and then they have six days to create a video from that prompt. Pretty much within 30 seconds of learning their prompts, it turns into chaos. They start groaning about the prompt or wondering how they're actually going to be able to do that in six days. After the first day, once they kind of have a better idea what they want to do, that's when the real pre-planning process starts and they're planning out their scripts, they're planning their storyboard. And then I don't see the kids for a couple of days because they're out filming. And then they pretty much live in my room the last two days editing and polishing their stuff.
We chose Sammy. He was a football player and his second chance was is that he wasn't really doing well with his grades in school. And not only that, but he has both parents absent. One's in jail, his mother's in jail, and his father has just never been around for him.
The biggest challenge probably was to schedule that review because the person that we were doing on, he had classes he had to go to. And we had to basically schedule out when we can do that and how fast we need to do it because then we need to go out and get be role of him.
I was a little concerned, to be honest. I thought the voiceover could have been a little better, but that was just more on my part, you know? But for the most part, I thought it turned out great. I never would have thought it would win first in the nation, but I thought it was good.
The first day, we had to set up all the interviews and we really didn't get, we didn't really go forward, but on the second day, it really picked up. Me and a teammate stayed until, you know, very late to finish the project. And I'm glad we did because, well, we won.
The reason I choose to have my program participate in competitions is that I feel like it gives the kids the real-world skills that they need, not just for a career in TV, but any career. They need to know how to turn something in by a deadline. They need to know how to have polite conversation with adults or people that they've never met before. So these competitions give those kids those skills that they're going to need to be successful after high school.
The kids come to Nielsen once a month and we spend one to two hours with them, kind of just asking them how their day are depending on what their activity is in the morning time. We kind of talk about it in the afternoon time. And then we just kind of, how's it going? Any updates? And just kind of connect with them that way. So my little's name is Maisy. She is in the 12th grade. And this is our second year together. And again, when we first met, we were just getting to know each other. Things were kind of quiet in the beginning, but by the end of our first visit, we were just like, oh my gosh, we have a lot of amazing connections. And we were able to kind of just pick up right where we left off the next time we met. And it was like we had been old friends, I think, and just been able to connect that way.
I love Candice. I really enjoy having her around. She's a really great support system for me. This past year has been really rough for me, like familial-wise, and just having her as a support is something I can't replace.
The benefit I see is the exposure to the program and to a corporate America because sometimes kids don't get experience or to be able to, to just be thrown into a corporate environment. And are able to learn different things and learn from different people in the community.
I personally always feel like I want to better myself because the better that I am, I can better others. So just knowing how many connections there are out there, I've made a lot of great friends. We were able to make like a lot of posters for our talent show last year through their company. And just knowing that there's a system out there that can support you, all of course, even great.
So a lot of the stuff is future-oriented, so it's letting us know how to plan for colleges and applying for scholarships. Last year, we did like a financial day. So GTE came in and we banked with them basically and figured out like scheduling and really just a great way to show us how to participate in being a citizen.